Talking points that we referred to right back in September time. And just draw out these two, I think, that might be a good lens for looking at that notion of sort of sentence structure. Why are we talking about that? What difference does that make? And so that feels like a bit of a dull topic. But hopefully, if we put it through the lens of these two ideas of in terms of working with children have ideas for writing, but find it hard to get them down on paper. And so I want to talk a little bit later on about this idea of talk and this notion of write alouds might be a strategy that I'm suggesting to you that you might like to think about. And so that's very applicable whether you're down in reception or in year six. I think the method is the same. And then really thinking about that idea of the purpose of the choice that you make over sentences, and I know Rob wants to talk about vocabulary later, is in order to hook in your reader. You want to write about something that somebody wants to read about. So as teachers, you know, are we trying hard enough to create real reasons for writing aimed at specific audiences? Because that will adjust how we write and our choice over sentences. Be what will be a couple of just sort of lead you to further discussion. So Rob asked me today to be a bit contentious. So if I'm too contentious or not contentious enough, then you can blame him. And there are going to be opportunities for discussion, but because I need to keep to time, I'm not going to ask for feedback. We just thought that you might have kind of a couple of minutes discussion within your groups. And then you can feed that into your kind of cluster conversations or within your sort of school conversations. And so we thought we'd just kind of recap this idea of shared writing. And it sounds like people have had a go of kind of moving into that and trying some of those ideas out. If it was a kind of reminder, sometimes we learn a bit about it. Just somebody saying, have you done that? You say, oh yeah, I used to do that. Why don't I do that anymore? That's a good kind of way of prompting you to try something again. I want to talk about guided writing as well. And Rob and I have been chatting about sort of sentence structure, the role of editing, who needs to edit, when they need to edit. And I think guided writing is a really good place where you can do that. So just again, I know that a lot of you have covered this in your training. And I know many of you are incredibly informed. So it's really just for some of you, it would just be, oh yeah, I used to do that. Or I've done it, etc. And then we want to sort of move into some of these themes of contextualisation and familiarisation. So in your work, learning, the teaching package, there's a lot in there around this idea of how grammar should be taught and the importance of or the balance of being able to speak explicit grammar, but at the same time, being able to kind of contextualisation. And some of you were just talking earlier on about sort of immersion and using that kind of idea of really immersing children in the text and the experience. And then I'll mention a bit about variety and vocabulary. And then I'll hand it over to Rob at the end. And so first of all, just talking about sort of like the shared guided writing, just to take you back to that diagram really. Because I think for me, as a writing teacher and also as a writer myself, but doing a lot of writing workshops with children, this is the diagram that I come back to. When I'm doing writing with children, am I making time for all of these parts to happen? Or do I demonstrate writing and then immediately move to their own? And I'm sure what to do. And I think that guided writing gets missed out. And so I just want to kind of talk a little bit about that really. It might be worthwhile, Rob, reflecting later, whether people found that a useful image, whether it's something that kind of might support the planning of writing. You know, starting with an image, are you kind of, have you made allowances or time for all of those different elements to come together? My dog is going to come running up the stairs any minute now. So my apologies, but what's going to sound like a very busy dog. Back to Pi Corbett, who I just think says, you know, really good stuff about writing. And so, you know, he's absolutely clear that teachers who do not share, do not do shared writing and not teaching writing. So that modelling that some of you were talking about being absolutely really, really super, super useful in modelling for children. Some of you there were talking about kind of planning what you're going to write. I think that's a really good idea. And I think somebody said something about knowing where they were aiming for, where they were going to. But I think possibly thinking sometimes about maybe you don't come to it with a plan. Maybe you come to it with really an open mind about what you might possibly write and then seeing where that goes. Sorry. And then that idea that by watching you write or modelling writing, children are witnessing a writer at work. So they're seeing that role model for writing, which, you know, is missing. We see role models for reading, not necessarily for writing. So thinking about guided writing then. So that idea that guided writing and there will be different ways of doing it. I'm taking you back to probably what was kind of sort of like when this was proposed as a strategy. So this is going to feel like quite a pure version. And then you'll have different versions of it as well. But I just put this out there for discussion. This may well be contentious, Rob. So by working with a small group, you're able to observe what the writers in your group are doing. So you can observe the process. If you work with a child on writing and you're in a small group, it immediately develops their self-esteem because you can jump in straight away. You imagine sitting with year one, you can immediately see what they're doing. You can immediately jump in and support that process at the point that they're doing it. Same with year sixes, you can kind of be sitting and chatting to them about their writing. So, you know, how's it going? How's it going as a process? Are you happy with the way you're developing that character? And that makes children feel good about what they're doing. You can apply some of those skills that you're learning in different contexts. Rob and I were chatting about that balance with SPAG and kind of, you know, really enjoying text, but actually being able to do it in a small group means you can apply some of those skills. A lot of talk, for me, a lot of what gets missing in writing and quality writing is the opportunity to talk, to talk about what you're going to write, to talk about whilst you're writing. And then often about the process of talking about having written, being able to chat about, you know, I'm not really happy with that. That's not really working. That's what makes children improve by thinking and being able to reflect on what they've done. We know we're working in very busy and challenged timetables. Is that always possible? By working in this small group, you can challenge children, you can support children, you can allow them to meet individual targets, group targets. But it also provides a space to reflect on their own writing. When I do guided writing with children, sometimes we don't do any writing at all. We talk about what we might write. We talk about a piece of writing that we've done that we're not happy with. We bring a challenge to the group. I'm really struggling with this part in the story. I don't know how to kind of get it up to sort of, I don't know how to turn the corner on this story. Anybody got any ideas? And that discussion, think about those discussions you have about reading. Can we make space to have those types of discussion about writing as well? Because that's what will push children through and improve. For me, when I'm doing guided writing, I think about who I want to work at which point. So I don't work with all children at the same phase in the writing process because not all children need that support from me. So some children need you at the starting point when they're preparing to write. I've got no idea what I'm going to write about. Well, it makes sense for me to work with you then because I can help you with those ideas. You might think about that as that in that the teaching sequence, the three circle teaching sequence that I know you kind of use previously. That's that idea of familiarisation. So for some children, it means reading. For some children, it's talking about the text and how about how they might actually create their own text. Some children are great with ideas, but they just can't do the drafting. You know, they can, they can sort of talk about their ideas, but they need you to sit down and help them while they're actually drafting or capturing their ideas. So how am I going to record those ideas? For younger children, that might be through storyboarding, it might be through images. You might have an adult scribing for the child. You might be doing a group piece together. So thinking about who needs you when. And then for some children, they need you at the editing stage or they need you at the point where they've done some writing. My experience of working with a whole range of writers is that very good writers need you at that final phase. They don't think they do because they'd be happy to write pages and pages and pages and pages. They've got no trouble preparing to write or drafting, but they find it really difficult to review their writing and actually say, that's not as strong as I'd like it to be. Or I really need to work on that. Because there's that sense of, I've done it, I've done those, you know, I've proven to you. Because isn't school about doing more? And when I think that I've kind of reached a standard, you go, that's great, but could you do some more? So actually, for some of your really good writers, actually writing less and writing better is what they need to be doing, really focusing on that quality. So for me, there's a kind of teaching sequence in the guided writing. And I used to, and when I worked with teachers, plan who you work with when. Which day do people need you? If you're going to work over 10 days, who needs you to work with them closely on the Monday? Who's better working with you on the Tuesday? And then kind of having like a chessboard of people that you work with at different times. As I say, could be contentious. Just leave that on your plate, Rob, there, I think, just to pick up and see whether you can, you know, whether people like that or not. As I say, that's quite a pure approach to it. And so in guided writing sessions, you can see now how it links to those circles from, I don't know whether you still refer to it as the PNS circles, but that's where it came from and work with UKLA. And Ed Ben in particular worked on that. And it does feel like quite a linear process. I think the authors behind that diagram would tell you that wasn't their intention, that their intention was to say that writing, you know, you kind of revisit things at different times. The way it's presented, it does make it appear that you do this and then you do this and then you do this and you lead to independent writing. And that wouldn't be what their intention was at all. They're trying to share with you the different components within a teaching sequence that you go backwards and forwards over. So I might be down as far as doing independent writing, but I might actually have to go back to text, to the text and really immerse myself back in the text again. Because I've kind of lost my way a bit with a particular genre that I'm writing or the purpose for writing, you know, I might have lost that. So don't treat that just, I've got to tick each box and move forward. Sometimes you'll go backwards as well because actually that's what you need at the time. So for me, guided writing, just in those kind of really quick sort of bullet points, it really allows you to focus on when and which children you need to support. And then the resources that you need to do that. So think about children in year one, year two, think about children in year six, which resources? And for resources for mean, mean people. And that might be other adults in the room, as much as volunteers, as much as other children. So as well as kind of physical resources. Think about how you differentiate your session. It's never going to look the same for all groups that you work with. And for me, guided writing is now I've worked with you, what can you now go and do by yourself? That independent writing, which might also mean working with other children as well. So have I given you enough so you know what you're doing tomorrow? So do I feel kind of prepared to be launched into writing the next page or the next paragraph, etc? Have I kind of structured, structured to do ways? So that was guided writing, ticked on that, Rob. And thinking about kind of contextualisation and familiarisation. And you're kind of, I shared the top quote with you from Bards and Cork, from Myra Bards's work and Val Cork's work around the reader in the writer. I'd really hold on to that as a term if I was you. Just that idea that, you know, within all kinds of writers, you've got, you know, you've got, you can see the fragments of what children are reading or have been read to in the kinds of things that they write. So it seems unlikely that there can be any fundamental writing development without reading development and vice versa. Progress in one is intimately related to and dependent on progress in the other. So I, you know, if I'm, if I'm writing, I might write like a reader. So I've got a really good idea in my mind of what my reader will like in terms of what I'm, I've written. So here's a question then from the pack. Can I let you have a kind of minute or two to chat about this? So the discussion point is, how can the teaching of reading facilitate the teaching of grammar? Can or should a reading lesson be a grammar lesson? So I should give you two minutes to have that discussion. So if you just sit in your clusters, Rob's watching everyone. Okay, bring everybody back now. Thanks, Rob. As soon as I can see you, Rob, I know it's okay to carry on. So again, leave that with you to kind of have a talk about it. And I'm not arguing that there isn't a place for grammar. There is absolutely, I can't, I can't improve my recipe and win the Great British Breakoff unless I know what those component parts and what it is that's possible for me to change and alter. So I think there is a place for grammar, it's just where it happens. So in terms of writing, so just some reminders here really, which leads into the next discussion point. And what's really important to know? It's really important to know that writing is made up of compositional and transcriptional elements. And different children have different strengths in either one. And again, need you at different points. That the two elements need to be understood and approached in different ways. So as I say, there is a place for grammar, there's also a place for handwriting lessons. You wanted contentious, Rob, there you go. That you need to consider the kinds of writing activities you plan for and at different times. For me, really important, there is a language needed about writing, both for you and the children you work with. So how we talk about the writing that we've done, we're a bit sort of limited. That was good, good effort. I like this, feels a bit weak. How can we kind of develop that language? And that the shared guided and independent reading can be used to support different stages at different, different children at different stages in both their own writing development, but also in the process of writing and trying to match that, I think is really important for you as teachers. So discussion point nine, over to you again. So this is from the pack. We know if children are familiar with a topic, they are better at reading comprehension around that topic. Does it work the same for writing? Is the same true for writing? If children know about the topic, they'll know. Okay, so again, we'll leave you to kind of think about that and talk about that some more and about how applicable it is for your own year group and how you might want to kind of think about that one together. So I just want to think now about what it's like to be on the other side of the table. So if you're a child in your class, what's it like to kind of experience a writing activity that you've thought hard and long about? It's the wrong way around, isn't it? It's long and hard. So I just want to share with you a reflection. So this is from some work that I did with three children. So this is one of the children. So during an observed school writing lesson, Sid, in year four, watches a film clip his teacher has made as a stimulus for persuasive writing. The secret video footage shows two governors and the head teacher talking about a proposal for a new road to be built through the school grounds. Having watched the film clip, the class debates the implications of the new road. And the teacher encourages the children to put pen to paper to demonstrate their opposition. Having completed his group's challenge to write nine persuasive sentences, Sid groups his sentences around the key features of the persuasive genre. And of his nine sentences, five are under the heading, dare the reader to disagree. Three sentences contain facts and figures and one sentence focuses on flattery. When asked to write on, to reflect on the dare the reader to disagree sentence, this is what Sid wrote. Only an idiot would want to cause pollution and kill plants. Sid's response to having written the word idiot in a school writing task reveals his delight. You quite like writing, idiot, yeah. So why did that feel good? I don't know, I just really like offending people. This was a very quiet boy in a year four class. So you'd have no idea that that was really what was going on below the surface. What's really important about this clip is that the teacher had gone to a lot of effort in order to set up an activity. She'd done some secret filming over the weekend with the two governors. And it was indeed the two governors and head teacher. Sid's reflection was, left the classroom. I said to him, he said to me, you do know it's just all made up, don't you? And when I interviewed him a couple of weeks later, this is what he talked about in that task. We wrote a letter to persuade them not to build the flats, but they didn't. But they weren't going to build the flats anyway. So what do you think about that as an activity then? Useful, not useful, pointless, a fake. Well, they want us to write something. And most of the time when they do that stuff, they, lots of people actually believe it. Like most of the people on the top table don't believe it. But they saw there were, do you talk about it in the playground? Is that how you know that they do believe it? No, they say, they say when we're working, that's definitely a fake video, you know. So I think what's really important here from Sid, and this is a feeling, a reflection from Sid, his solution was really simple. If that teacher had wanted the class to write in that specific genre of writing, just make them do a persuasive letter instead of pretending something's going to happen. But that teacher was a great teacher, she was an NQT. She'd really thought about what she did, she was doing, but she pitched it wrongly. When I was in the classroom watching what was happening, when the children saw this video, they were really, really quite outraged. There was a whole eco place within where the road was going to be, etc. What they wanted to do was to go and immediately speak to the head teacher about this. One child wanted to create posters and then they started kind of talking about, we can have a poster that can say this, we can have a placard that can say this. And they were really excited about it. And you can imagine this poor teacher going, no, 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 actually what I want you to do is to write nine sentences. So that kind of whole energy that they had about how they really wanted to respond was just taken away. So really thinking about, how can you best match what children's responses might be? So she was quite clear that this was going to be a letter and it was going to be made up of nine sentences. She hadn't given herself enough space to say, if they want to write, if they want to respond in a different way, actually, is it okay for them to respond in a different way? So I guess my next question to you for one minute is, what would happen if you asked the children to decide how they would like to respond to a stimulus or after a trip, a visitor, an opening chapter of the book that you're reading or the first couple of pages of a picture book that you might be sharing? What might happen? Is it something you might want to try? Where could you make the space for that to happen? So that you don't have a particular outcome in mind, you hand that over to the children. So you've got one minute there. So I leave that with you as a possibility. And that might be something that you kind of want to, want to chat about, to talk about. And it might be more appropriate in different, different year groups, etc. So thinking now about variety and vocabulary, and this is my kind of bridge to, to Rob. So just to share with you kind of that whole idea of kind of the use of sentences. What do authors do with sentences? If our Antony was telling this story, he'd start with the money. It always comes down to the money, he says. So you might as well start there. He'd probably put, once upon a time, there were 299,370 little pound sterling and go on until he got to, and they all lived happily ever after in a high interest bank account. So that text is taken from Millions by Frank Cottrell-Boyce, which is my all time favourite book and, and film. If you spoke to Frank Cottrell-Boyce about what he was writing there, he wasn't attempting to start with a simple sentence. He was attempting to start with a story. So when you're thinking about the sentences that you choose, thinking about the job that the sentence is trying to do is much more of a successful approach than saying, I must include one of these, I must include one of these. When you talk to writers, they often tell you that they don't really know the kind of grammar of writing in the way that you as a teacher are chatting to them. Because they don't think about that when they're writing. They think about the quality and the story and the story that they want to tell. I find that a really compelling opening. I want to, I want to read more. So that's it from Frank there. There's another book that I've been kind of looking at the moment, The Boy in the Tower by Polly Ho Yen. And so her first line is, when you wish that a Saturday was actually a Monday, you know there is something seriously wrong. So I just want to read on. I could sit there and deconstruct that sentence, but actually the sentence has done its job. It makes me want to read on. And that's what we're trying to do with the sentences that we think about. There's a discussion point also in your pack, discussion point nine, about children's overuse of simple sentence and how they draw on a limited range of conjunctions with an over reliance on the, on the conjunction and. Or conversely, you have children who overuse complex sentences when a simple sentence would have been just as effective. So being able to have those kinds of discussions with children, possibly in guided writings or when you're modelling writing for children, is a really good place to have those discussions. That's why you need to understand what the sentences are so that you can talk about them and the job that they do. I just want to share with you just a couple of points before I hand back to Rob. This was written, how many years ago now? 50 years ago, The Language for Life, the Bullock Report. And if you've been trained in the last 30 years, you'll have come across this report in your, in your training. And I still think it is absolutely crucial for writing. All that the children write, your response as an educator to what they write, their response to each other, all this takes place afloat upon a sea of talk. So in order for children to write well, they need to actually be able to be talking and actually thinking about how being able to write a sentence is very different to how I speak a sentence. But that bridge from what I say and what I think into kind of transcription that's got correct punctuation is properly constructed is a huge leap. And it's a really big leap for some children. So this is a strategy, just I'll leave with you, that you might want to think about. So it's called write alouds. I don't know who came up with write alouds. It's a thing, but it doesn't, it's not attributable to any particular person. So think about being in front of your class, leading a shared writing session. And you need to write the opening sentence. What you need to do as a teacher and to model is to think aloud so that the children can hear you as you start to write your sentence and choose how you're going to write your sentence. When you're happy, you then write your sentence down. And then you ask the children, can they come up with the next sentence? Can they write aloud the next sentence? You don't need them to do any writing or recording. So it's a great strategy, whether I'm four years old or 11 years old. And actually asking them to write aloud the next sentence, then you get to listen to a few and then choose one. And then you write it down, you're operating in that scribe at that point. And now you've got two sentences. So now you can discuss the two sentences. How could you improve them? How would you explain your improvements and what the impact of making those improvements has on this, on the, not only on the centre sentence, but also on the reader who's listening to the sentence? So I really like that as a, as a strategy. It's a really easy strategy. It's a very low resource strategy, which I particularly like as well. So just before I hand back to Rob, just to share with you this idea that probably in your classroom, there are two types of writer. And this is what George R.R. Martin, he of Game of Thrones suggests. He suggests that there are gardeners and there are architects. The Arctic architects plan and consider the whole picture, whereas the gardeners look at what they have to hand, the tools, the ideas and the necessary bit of magic. And they are happy to adapt and to create as they go along. Finding ways for you as a teacher to support both the story architect and the story gardener remains a challenge. It's easier to teach the architects and to support their planning process. The gardeners might need additional time and space to create their stories or their writing. And it is usually a much messier process. Most importantly within all of that is which one are you? Because which one you are will then depend the kind of writing that happens in. Because which one you are will then depend the kind of writing that happens in the classroom for your children. So again, back to that guided writing process, you're working with children. You get a sense of the type of writer that they are and that will then help you help them so much more specifically. And just to finish, Rob will know about this. This happened yesterday when we were on Twitter. And so Piers Torday, who wrote the Last Wild series, some of you might know that. He wrote this yesterday on Twitter and Rob and I both were in touch with him afterwards, saying, this couldn't be more perfect. Sorry to say that despite following the guidance, no more than six adjectives mixing in one paragraph, distance between two metaphors at all times, wash hands briskly after each adverb, seven chapters in my manuscript have now tested positive for overwriting virus and they are self-editing at home.